I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get it one short. Now we got a, for you two, if you haven't known, if you didn't know, Sally got a letter today of resignation by Sarah. She did, but she did, and she did not do it in writing either. It was in an email, which is not correct either.
Well, I'm not criticizing her, I'm just saying.
Well, I just wanted everybody to know when she got that. First order of business will be Indy.
Thank you. It's just trying to be ahead of the game instead of waiting till the week before Halloween. But I checked in with Frank and so the KBW ladies would like to, we're gonna do our Halloween parade and costume contest on South Market Street. And we just kinda ask that we can lock off forty-seven, between forty-seven, or, South Market, forty-seven and Plum Street during the costume contest to keep everybody safe and they're not having traffic. And then after it's over, which Frank and I probably need like seven fifteen at the latest, actually, it's probably six fifteen, maybe to seven fifteen, maybe an hour tops. Halloween is on Friday this year, so that's gonna maybe stir up extra business, I don't know. The library's gonna have their haunted room and the museum's doing stuff. And I'm checking with the kid, you guys, about hot dogs and things like that. So I think all these things will be happening that we do, and I'll check with the fire department for extra lights down here, but just wanted to make sure we can kinda plan to have that one block of South Market Street closed for that hour for the costume contest. And that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. You got any concerns, Frank? Would we make a motion to make that happen? What, what's the date? Is it the thirtieth?
Yeah, Friday the thirty-first. Halloween, okay. And then also Halloween hours normally, we place them, you guys take them sixty-nine. And Halloween is on Friday the thirty-first this year.
Okay, we're gonna walk off from Market Street, from Main Street to where?
To Plum. Just that one block.
Okay.
And really probably just after block, but we just keep that for everybody to just be on the street when we're doing the contest with all the kids, so there's plenty of room.
You don't think Main Street will be a problem with kids running down the street?
No, they, they go right here to one block and off right here to Main and Market, so I'll have the police brother, they, they go right, right, and walk this, this block over here.
Yeah, I know. But I, but Main Street, and we people on the other side of Main Street, we gotta get over here.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to set the trick-or-treat hours from six to nine P.M. on Friday, October thirty-first, and to close Market from Main to Plum for the parade and activities.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Propose motion passes. Okay, public concerns, and I don't see any public concerns out there. Department reports, I think. When we got in here. Got yours. I was reading what you had on there, Frank.
What's that?
I was reading what you had on the computer there about.
Oh, this is a clue?
Yeah.
I was just, I know I'm usually third by day, so I figured I'd bring that up.
Well, I read it, but I, can you explain it? I didn't understand all of what was happening.
So the Sheriff's Department approached, I mean, they, they're doing escorts, I mean, you'll, you'll see a lot of times state police escorts, supersized loads.
Yeah.
So Sheriff's Department is doing a lot of that, and they reached out for help to do it, different companies. Here's the tip, it's statewide, usually it's an eight-hour day, you're going from, sometimes from, it's within the state, but it could be from Chicago down to the state line, west to Ohio line. Our, our policy currently allows for us to use those within a continuous cap, basically a surrounding cap. So if you allowed us to do that, you'd have to amend that to that portion. The reason, told me might be able to help out, if we could do that, the town would also receive a mileage of forty-nine cents a mile. So we, the officers who are doing escort will get paid an hour rate, but the town will also get re-identified for forty-nine cents a mile. It's not a ton, but helps out a little bit, a little gas or whatever, at least supplement a little part of the trip. So I would ask, I request that you allow some of that.
Only concern I got actually is if you guys have got a lot of that happening, number one, how many officers at one time have you got, you could spare, cause even talking, you said in that article there that you usually have two officers. Is that correct?
No.
Or you got a front, a front and a back?
So those, so it usually takes six, six to seven, so you're working with other guys. So right now it's Boone County and Wycktown, we're doing the majority of it, we can't fill the shifts.
I saw, I saw him doing one Saturday, I believe, uh, Wycktown at the Sheriff's Department, there was only two of them, but only one truck.
Yeah, so it kinda depends on what they've got. Most of them, in between two and four, and it's as high as four or five on some, just based on what the jury was telling me. Obviously, this would be done in non, non-duty hours, I mean, it could be on our days off.
Well, that's one, I mean, I got two concerns, one of them is that, of, 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 you're, how many people you have, and who can do it, and then the other concern is the wear and tear on the, on our machines, and how long it's gonna take to wear them out. If this is a continual thing through the years, are gonna be a year, six months, one month, two months, who knows?
But it, I mean, they've been doing it for two years. It's a very steady thing.
It's probably not gonna slow down any then.
I, no, it's actually a species of, again, I mean, I know it's not a ton, but they're, they're giving mileage, I mean, they're paying the town mileage for wear and tear, I mean, and we're not driving, you know, country roads, I mean, it's all pretty much interstate drive.
So what's your thoughts on it? You wanna do, you wanna do it?
I'm not gonna turn down any more dollars than that. No, of course, I mean, a lot of our guys, so all of us, I mean.
Can you swear us in?
Sure.
I actually need some of that too.
Take me out, I'm gonna have to do that. It's a lot safer to do that than it is working down, downtown Indy, I can tell you that, I'd much rather do that than working downtown. And I'm not asking for statewide use, usage, only except those instances where we, we're doing those, that's, I'm not asking for anything else.
But it's possible, right? You could go clear to Fort Wayne and go clear down to Celeryburg or someplace through there.
Yep.
No, I, I, I mean, I don't have an issue with it, but I was just wondering, would we, think we'd have to update our salary ordinance, cause that's where we talked about their use of vehicles, or is that a separate?
I, I tried to find it earlier and I can't find it, so, I, it may, it may be in, I didn't look it up, I was looking it up.
Well, I was just trying to, so, so we have a policy somewhere that says they can use their police cars in Boone County and the town counties.
Technically, this wouldn't be personal use of a car. Europe is the town allowing the car to be used for.
True.
This project.
For that project.
So it's really, I mean, obviously, the town still owns the car, and you're allowing them to take the town's car.
True.
So it wouldn't really change the salary ordinance. But you would have to maybe modify language a little bit to say in particular instances of these supersized loads. You allow it to be done.
What about the, what about the insurance?
I, I don't see why it would be an issue, you're on the highways, uh, no different than driving a car in town, so.
They care to get insurance as well, for, for different guys out there, for different patient purposes too. Anything that would happen out there, there, I think it says it in there, that they cover.
They being who, the state?
They being the companies that were.
The companies that are hiring.
Yep. So if you get a flat tire out there, they're paying for it. Yeah, whatever the case may be.
If you have to go to Chicago, do they pay you from here to Chicago to Louisville back to here?
So, we're paid the second we walk out the door, mileage, sir, the second I walk out the door. To where I get to it, all the way down and then all the way back up.
Mileage wise?
Mileage wise as well.
So if you have to walk a mile to your car, we get fifty cents?
I guess so, I hope I wouldn't have to walk a mile with cars.
Okay, anybody wanna make a motion that they allow our police to do that?
What's, what's the name of the project, or is it?
It's just super loads, it's just a super loads.
There's a list on the computer, super loads.
I'll make a motion to allow our police officers and vehicles to help in the super load escorts.
Second. All in favor?
Go ahead. Can we modify that to like, say, a six-month trial base, and then see where we're at? Does he have a problem with that? Cause if we drive four hundred miles, we get a hundred ninety-six bucks. For four hundred miles. We can, I'll amend that for a trial basis of six months, and then we'll evaluate from there.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Motion carries.
I have one more thing, I, I remember a couple meetings ago, we talked about, first thing. I, I don't know if we ever approved it, I think we just talked about, I didn't wanna go out and do it, most of the time I actually approve it, so.
Were you just, were you gonna give us some prices, or?
Yeah, I, I attached the quotes.
Oh, did you?
Thought come ago, so either another cop or another pickup truck, they were both probably grabbing the exact same amount of fifteen thousand. They'll pass the cop over there, drives down, deserves, get rid of the other two.
Was that in the email? There's attachments?
Yeah, it was a couple meetings ago, and I, I sit with my department reports yet. I didn't really get it.
I didn't think, I don't think I've seen it, but, I remember you talk, I've never talked about it.
Yeah, I just don't remember that, I don't, I don't think you got it approved, but I just, I didn't want to, who's that?
And we have the money in your lib account?
I thought we passed that, we didn't pass it. You don't think we passed that?
We passed the resolution, you passed the, signed the resolution to get rid of the older vehicles, yeah.
I don't think we, I don't think we ever voted on the new vehicle.
Did you specify what you want, whether it's, it's not a pickup, it's a?
It's a, it's a pickup truck.
A pickup?
Yep. Chevrolet. A lot of their gas, a lot of their cop.
Bruce, I don't think I have a fund or an appropriation report out, do you want one?
Yeah.
I don't think I have a fund or an appropriation report out, do you want one? Though, just to, I don't know, to look at or, for me.
No, that's why I was just looking forward. He probably knows too well.
We waited, they don't have to be decided, I just, before I forgot it, because it's, it usually takes about sixteen weeks for it to roll out. You don't get in early enough to, you have to. We'll leave a call, or, at least like an entry like, yeah, go ahead, no.
Well, go ahead and do it, because it'd be important, if we don't, it's gonna be after.
Right. Uh, I'll make a motion to allow Police Department to buy a new vehicle, if they want the purchase.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Okay, Frank, you go ahead.
Thank you.
I'm just seeing if I forward, say, with everybody.
I have some more of those, I didn't own this, we get into that, the Indiana State did.
Okay, uh, anything else, Frank?
No, one, one quick thing, I'm sorry. I know the, the Martin property's been a source of contention for quite some time, I've been working with him, he's got a lot of that, it's a junk pile of mess right now, but he's getting it torn down, getting it out, slowly but surely. Problem I have with him now, he's in jail, I don't know when he's getting out. So it may be a point, I mean, he's been arrested twice in the past three weeks. It may be something where we may have to take action if we're putting it up, if we really wanna start cracking it down on him.
Well, I mean, if we do, we're gonna, it's gonna have to fall back on the owner, so.
So the, the owner of Crawford is stopped, Chris almost traded him, so I, I, again, I'm still trying to work with his wife to at least, he making progress on it, you know, but, just wanted to put it here.
A P C.
Nothing.
Not yet.
No park board, no fire department. Stormwater, bruise, nothing. Utility department.
Yeah, Patriot Engineering spent the day down at the water plant, they'll be down there half the day tomorrow, they're taking soil samples. So again, cut Sean's crew and design a foundation for the water plant. And the other thing is the street patching will occur the first week of November, the third through the seventh.
Okay, great. Where, where are they taking soil samples, in the woods?
No, you know, in the grassy lot just to the south of the water plant?
Yeah.
Right there. It's for the foundation, right? Foundation, correct.
Okay.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's it.
Uh, just real quick, and this, this isn't anything we have to do, anything with tonight, but I've talked to somebody already about the truck that's sitting out there, and the possibility of having a discussion about possibly the utilities buying that truck. And we would use it somewhat for the utilities, we would be using it a lot for the street department, which is you guys. So we're not interested in paying sixty or seventy thousand dollars for it, but if we can come up with a number that makes everybody happy, we might be interested in buying it, whatever we paid for it would be that much more to put into your budget that you don't have now. So I think it's a, we have, we have two pickup trucks that both run fine. We don't particularly need the truck right now, but one of those trucks is starting to rest pretty good. And we're thinking if we can make some kind of a deal that makes everybody happy, then we'll have that truck and at a price that maybe, by the time we need a truck in a year or two, that truck would probably cost us eighty-five thousand dollars. So if we can come up with some kind of deal, something to think about, and you guys discuss it, like I said. We're not gonna buy it tonight, we don't need to really discuss it tonight, but if you guys talk about it, we can come to an agreement, buy it, if we don't, nothing lost. We're not gonna get in a fight over.
I'd like to see it inside. Someplace, I mean, I, you know whether you got room or not, Earl, but if there's a way to get it inside, it's, you're gonna make a big difference on the longevity.
I agree with your agreement, it would be nice to get it inside, you got room down at your place, do you want some?
Yeah, yeah.
Park it down there?
Yeah, I'll send you a bill.
That's all on my hand.
Okay, and discussing the electric problem a little bit. Jeff doesn't think there's anything we've signed either, I don't think there's anything we've signed at all that says that we would be making a payback on the electric.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're pretty much in agreement as a board that they're blowing smoke on that, we're, we're not gonna do that. They're questioning the quote that we gave them to do some electrical work, that they claim they can get done cheaper if they hire somebody else to do it, I don't think we're gonna do, well, we're not gonna do that because when they're done, they're gonna turn it back to us, and then if everything's screwed up, we'll end up paying the fix at all, so that's not gonna apply either, we don't know if they're just playing games or what, but we'll deal with that.
Okay.
They wanted to have, they wanted to have a meeting with this me, and I'm not gonna do that. I think what we've decided, we're gonna tell them, they have to come to the board meetings, if they wanna talk about it, and if they don't wanna talk about it, they can take what they got. I don't get paid overtime for working extra hours.
Well, it's ridiculous, since we have to pass it by anybody, everybody in the.
Well, that's the thing, I can't make decisions on my own anyway, cause we voted to do what we did, and talking to me, I can't say, well, okay.
Is it, is the reason they don't want it to be public? Is that why?
Uh, I'm not sure what now.
They don't want the meeting to be public, is that why?
Oh, I don't, I don't know if that has anything to do with it or not. They talked to Earl, Earl shot him down on all accounts, so they want to talk to somebody else. So somebody else can shoot him down on all accounts.
And just a quick clarification on that note in regards to that rebate, Mike, the, uh, Mike Adam told us that rebates are pretty common for like R M Cs, municipalities like One Town, they never ever do a rebate. So there's no precedent set, they're pulling from two different types of operations, municipality versus cooperative. Municipals don't do rebates, cooperatives do, and the two samples he sent us were both in the cooperative, so just make sure that's clear in mind, there is a difference and no precedent set.
Okay. Okay, we're down to unfinished business. Jeff?
Yeah, I just was gonna blow you in on a couple things that I've been working on. Earl wasn't able to be there this morning, but we, I had a meeting out here at the Arbor Mall with Pat Lutowski. And they were asking about going ahead and connecting to the electric, which they've done a temporary meter that they put in. And they're connected to the electric, they, they have been in and they've signed their, they've got their accounts set up. The water account is set up as well, as I understand it, and so that's all ready to go, they wanna turn on the water to water lawns. So what we agreed to this morning is, is, and I didn't even have a chance to talk to Earl about this yet, but what they agreed to this morning was that they would put a lockable valve on the water in the house, and we can put our own padlock on it if we want, or we can let them do it. Uh, but that water to the house will be locked out while they water the lawns, because there's no connection to the lift station yet. So they can't be using bathrooms, they can't be using sinks, so on and so forth in the house. The permitting has all been done, or the inspections have all been done up to this point, up to the certificate of occupancy. And so that's what they're ready for, is a temporary C of O to allow them to start this coming Friday selling out of that building. So the other thing that I was working on is, and I don't know if you, you probably not, probably didn't send emails to everybody, but Charlie Campbell, who lives just outside of town here, was the London Building Director for a lot of years. And Charlie has agreed to come to do inspections for us, greatly discounted from what the engineering firm can go for. And he's gonna do that in the next, for the next few weeks until we get this thing ironed out on the A P C. And he's just gonna do that under a, uh, basically a contractor's agreement. And so I'll be bringing that to you here as soon as we get the language and that set up. Charlie Campbell? So, and he's got a lot of years of experience, so he's, he really does a good job, and he's very meticulous, so we'll get, we'll get good inspections from him. And so basically what's gonna happen for now is anybody needs an inspection done, I'm gonna have him contact me first, and then I'll get Charlie out there to take care of the inspection. He's also gonna do plan reviews for us, so we're, we're gonna meet here Wednesday morning and go through all the permitting that we've got right now, and get all those permits back out to, in people's hands, cause we've been putting that off, or not putting it off, but we have not gotten it done. We've got, at a gallery, we got four right now, is that right?
I think, yeah, I've got one more, so five, we're up to five.
Four or five, that we're gonna work on Wednesday morning, try to get all those permits ready to go out to people. And obviously, there's a permit pending, but I think that's to go to the A P C first. What's his name? The, the setback?
Oh, Marcellus got ahold of me and said it needs to come to the council, so that'll be on the next agenda for the variance review for him, yep. Yeah.
That's what we probably did. It's a variance, yeah. So we'll get all that put together, and the next meeting we'll have more information.
Let's back up to the connection, I thought, I thought that street cut was for the connection of the, you're saying the sewer's not hooked up?
I'm gonna, um, address that.
So there's a number of issues out there that Rick Miller from, with Dan Kestrel dealing with with the lift station. And it has to do with the design of the lid, how easily the pumps were or were not accessed. And he's right, he, I'm glad he's out there, because he knows these things that were pretty, pretty important. And he got some pushback on, so kind of lay everything, but yes, in essence, the sewer lines are out there, all wastewater lines are not ready to go through that lift station, that lift station's not ready to be used, so there's to be no wastewater going through those lines at all yet. So any water they use out there is strictly the water going on, no. No, what Jeff already said, no flushing toilets, no running water through sinks, nothing.
I thought, didn't they, didn't they boil those lines and test them and make sure there's no leaks?
There are no leaks. There are no leaks. This has to do with the lift station.
Well, I know, but I thought, well, I thought that was part of the process of doing that when they, that was the last thing they did before you could use the lift station and get the sewer, sewage out of there.
And what they did was a part of the design that they went with, went against what Rick wanted done. And he asked for a few things. I'll give you an example. One of the things they asked for, they put in, embedded in the concrete, they put steps, ladder, metal. So we don't need those, no one's ever going down there, all it's going to do is collect debris, remove them. That's one thing. He said you need to have a different kind of concrete at the bottom, one that won't collect debris itself and allows the water to move freely. They had to change that. The lid itself was designed improperly so that the rails in which you bring the pumps up were offset. So you had to bring them up somehow, finagle them off the rails and brought it over to the actual door. And they looked about, that's impossible, that's never going to happen. Why they thought it would work that way, I don't know. All I know is there's a number of changes that he's pretty much pushing for that they're going to have to meet. And he's legit, he's, he's right. He's right on all.
Good. What, what's the timeframe they're, they're thinking?
Don't know because it's one of those, let me stall it out and maybe Rick will look the other way type of thing. You know? Maybe he'll ease up, maybe he won't be so pushy about it. But Rick has, uh, he's pretty strong about that stuff. He's got a set way it's going to be done and they're going to have to meet the way he wants it done.
So as of right now though, the, the lift station is hooked up to the sewer.
It is hooked up, correct.
They're going to have to unhook that to move the lift station itself to move it.
No, the lift station's not moving anywhere. The lid has to be redesigned and reformed. It's precast concrete. They haven't been entirely new lid. It has to have a different type of door on top of it.
So they'll have to bust all that out and change it like they, like they did out here.
Yep. Timeline, I don't know. It's up to them. I mean, they, they want to get going. I suggest, you know, to get going.
Okay, we need to do the budget adoption and reading approval resolution.
There is a copy in each of your folders, but here is the one to sign. And there have been no changes this week or these last few weeks. So it's the budget that was discussed at the public hearing that's being signed off.
What will be talking about here about next week is a public hearing?
That is the upcoming, the introduction of that ordinance for establishing.
Oh.
That's a great ordinance.
And.
Yes.
Yeah. That's the beginning, yeah.
Okay, we need, we need to make a proposal to accept this one. But we got to sign it. No one is going to sign it.
Uh, so ordinance resolution for appropriating appropriations and tax rates. Total adopted budget is one million twenty-three thousand twenty-two dollars. I will make a motion to accept the twenty, twenty-six budget proposal.
It's written. It's written. Go here, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Reading and approval of resolution. I'm going to pay with the pilot.
Resolution to reset the annual payment in lieu of taxes for pilot. Payment made by the town's public water, wastewater and electric facilities to the general fund. Whereas the town of Thorntown, as the owner of publicly operated water, wastewater and electric utilities, provides water, sewage and electric services to residents in and outside of the limits of the town. And whereas it is the audit position of the Indiana State Board of Accounts that municipalities, municipal utilities not under the jurisdiction of Indiana Utility Reg. Commission can also elect to make payments in lieu of taxes under Indiana Code eight dash one dash three point five dash eight, which are reasonable and sufficient charges to compensate the town for taxes that would be due to the town where the utilities' properties, where the utilities' properties privately own. And whereas the town's water, wastewater and electric utilities have been making pilot payments from its water, wastewater and electric funds to the general fund for many fiscal years and such total annual payment amount has remained at or around thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars since at least two thousand and eleven. And whereas during the twenty twenty-six budget development process, the town reviewed and recalculated the pilots to be made by the three utilities to make them current since they were last updated and now therefore be resolved by the town council of the town of Thorntown, Indiana, that it reestablishes the annual pilot payments to be made by the town's utilities per the table, per the below tables and per the calculation attached heretofore and incorporated herein as Exhibit A. Section one, the pilot payment from the Thorntown Water Electric and Wastewater Utility for the year twenty twenty-five shall be as follows. Wastewater payment in lieu of taxes in the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars to the general fund. Water utility payment in lieu of taxes will be two thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars paid to the general fund. And electric payment in lieu of taxes is one thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars to be paid to the general fund for a total of forty-three thousand one hundred and eight dollars for the year twenty twenty-five. Section two, the pilot payment from the Thorntown Water Electric and Wastewater Utility for the year twenty twenty-six and thereafter until subsequently amended shall be as follows. From the wastewater utility, the payment in lieu of taxes will be thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars paid to the general fund. Water utility payment in lieu of taxes will be nineteen thousand four hundred and three dollars paid to the general fund. The electric utility payment in lieu of taxes will be two thousand eighty-nine dollars paid to the general fund for a total of sixty thousand two hundred and seven dollars for the year twenty twenty-six and thereafter. This resolution is adopted by the town council of the town of Thorntown, Indiana on this sixth day of October twenty twenty-five.
I have a hard copy here too. That's the copy assigned right there.
Exhibit A for the town of Thorntown, the schedule of pilot calculation for pay twenty twenty-six. Gross plant value of the wastewater is seven million nine hundred and sixty-one thousand and seventy-six dollars. The gross plant value of the water is three million nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. The gross plant value of the electric utility is four hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-eight for a total of twelve thousand, twelve million three hundred and eighty thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Corporate tax rate is point four eight six three dollars. So you take that amount towards, times the value of each utility and it comes up with the pilot amounts of thirty-eight seven hundred and fifteen for wastewater, nineteen thousand four hundred and three for water, two thousand eighty-nine dollars for electric, a total of sixty thousand two hundred and seven dollars.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to pass, do we have a resolution number four? A member? I'll make a motion to pass the resolution to reset the annual payment in lieu of taxes for the public water, wastewater and electric facilities.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, it was just on the, um, three from, yeah.
Yeah.
If anybody has one yet, the, the town council will need to appoint a fourth person for the BZA and then Grumpel will need to appoint three people, one of which needs to be a citizen member of the APC. So that needs to be either Don or Eric. So the BZA will still need those four appointments in order to get established.
Okay. Um. Well, either, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Okay. Okay. I can handle it. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I'm working on one guy. Your business?
Uh, introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five, the ordinance establishing rates and charges reflected by the town of Thorntown, Indiana, from the customer served by the Water Works Utility of said town.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five, whereas the town, Thorntown, Boone County, Indiana owns and operates a Water Works Utility for the benefit of the rate payers within the town and its surrounding areas. And whereas various ordinances have been adopted from time to time regarding policies and procedures for the waterworks and the establishment of water rates, fees and charges. And whereas the Thorntown's, Thorntown Utility Service Board has engaged Steve Brock to complete a rate study of the Water Works Utility. And whereas based upon the completed rate study, the USB has recommended that the rates and charges to be collected from the customer served by the Thorntown Water Works Utility to be amended. And whereas the Thorntown Town Council finds the rates and charges set forth herein should be adopted. Now therefore be hereby ordained by the town council of the town of Thorntown, Indiana as follows. Section one, the water rates and charges set forth on Exhibit A attached heretofore made a part here, are hereby adopted and established for the use of service rendered by Thorntown Water Works Utility. Section two, all other provisions of ordinance number two thousand ten dash two, two thousand fourteen dash three, twenty twenty-two dash seven, twenty twenty-four dash eleven, twenty twenty-five dash one, and other ordinances related to water rates and charges not amended by this ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. Section three, that the Water Works rates and charges reflected herein will become effective immediately. Section four, that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect ever, after its passage of approval according to law or otherwise set forth herein. Ordained and adopted by the town council, such and such date. Do I need to read the rates? Probably. Read the rates. Meter flow rates per one thousand gallons, first five thousand gallons presently eight oh six will be increased by seven and a half percent to eight sixty-six. Next ten thousand gallons is seven dollars and twelve cents and will be raised to seven sixty-five. The next fifteen thousand gallons is presently six twenty-six and will be raised to six seventy-three. The next twenty thousand gallons presently is at five thirty-six and will be raised to five seventy-six. Over fifty thousand gallons is presently four forty-eight and will be raised to four eighty-two. It's a seven and a half percent increase. Monthly minimum charges, meter size five eighths inch meter is sixteen thirteen and will raise to seventeen thirty-four. A one inch meter is presently thirty-two sixteen and will be raised to thirty-four fifty-seven. An inch and a quarter meter is presently fifty-eight thirteen, will be raised to sixty-two forty-nine. A one and a half inch meter is currently eighty fifty-five and will be raised to eighty-six fifty-nine. Two inch meter is presently one twenty-five twenty-seven and will be raised to one hundred thirty-four and sixty-seven cents. Three inch meter is currently two hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy-two cents and will be raised to two hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents. Four inch meter is currently three hundred and fifty-seven eighty-seven and will be raised to three hundred and eighty-four seventy-one. Public fire protection charges per month, five eighths inch meter currently four thirty-eight will be raised to four seventy-one. A one inch meter is ten ninety-six and will be raised to eleven seventy-eight. Inch and a quarter meter is presently sixteen sixty-three and will be raised to seventeen eighty-eight. Inch and a half meter is twenty-one ninety and will be raised to twenty-three fifty-four. Two inch meter is currently thirty-five oh four and will be raised to thirty-seven sixty-seven. A three inch meter is sixty-five sixty-nine and will be raised to seventy sixty-two. Four inch meter is currently one oh nine forty-eight and will be raised to one hundred seventeen sixty-nine. Tap fees, five eighths through three inch, five eighths through three quarter inch meter, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Large meters, actual cost, but not less than seven hundred and fifty dollars. A meter deposit will be fifty. Reconnection fees, twenty-five. Penalties will be ten percent of the first three dollars, then two percent of remaining balance. Bad check charge will be twenty-five dollars. A capacity fee per EDU is four thousand dollars per ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eleven effective from December first, twenty twenty-four billing period. That was for capacity fees per ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one.
And just a, a quick note on that, the seven point five percent is probably the first time that that number's been on the paper, but that is the, the rate study increase, that initial amount and the maximum of the rate study. It's, the seven point five is the difference from the new numbers to now versus, so it's getting that whole rate study number, but that's where the seven point five percent came from. It's the current increase to that.
That's what we have left of mine.
Yeah, we, the seven and a half percent increase is what we have left between the rate study and what we were charging.
What we adopted last time.
What we adopted the last time and now we still.
So what were you saying?
The original rate study had, you could do a certain percentage or I think was the maximum, like eleven percent on that increase. So you're still getting that eleven percent with this, but it's based on the new rates. So that eleven percent was the, were those original rates in twenty, or two thousand and eleven.
Oh, okay.
So that seven point five percent, yeah, that's why it's different from that rate max.
We used up your whole rate studies while we did now.
Right.
So if you got to win two, again, we've got to have another rate study.
Right. We're doing that now. Close of the plan. All right. We'll have a public hearing at our next meeting on. public uh hearing at our next meeting on calendar's wrong, October.
October nineteenth, yeah.
On October twentieth, we'll have a public hearing.
Twentieth.
Well, we're gonna need to make a motion to accept that.
No, we can't.
We can't do anything till we do it.
You do need to make a motion to set public hearing in time. Oh, we do. Uh. I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash five for October twentieth at seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries.
That's all done except for.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I say, can I say one more thing?
Go ahead.
Something you might be interested in hearing about soon. You know, the, the electric work that we're doing down Grant Street that we're actually paying for because Arbor donated two hundred dollars to the water plant. So when you look at the financials, uh, it looks like the electric is not making very much money. I think we're kind of like a little bit, a little bit maybe, but out of that two hundred thousand dollars, they've already billed, did he say about a hundred eighty-five percent?
Yeah, give me a second, I can do exactly what I asked.
Well, he's looking for that, it's around a hundred eighty-eighty-five thousand dollars. I need to get with the alley to see what we've actually paid of that bill, but if we paid a big chunk of that, it looks like we're going to be able to pay that two hundred thousand dollar bill and he said they're coming in right on buggy, maybe just a hair under without getting into any savings money or anything. We're making enough money, having enough money in the checkbook that we've been able to pay that bill without getting into our investment money, so that's, that's a that's a good thing. Just information for you guys to know.
Yes, the number is the circuit uh budget was a hundred ninety-five thousand. They burned up a hundred seventy-seven thousand in costs to date and they've been billing in progress payments in about thirty to forty thousand dollar chunks, so that's kind of the range you're looking for. The last piece to install is the recloser, it's about eighteen grand, but it's right at one ninety-five today. And we're talking around those, of course.
It, it goes out there on forty-seven, doesn't it? Are they, are they coming off of forty-seven buried?
Yeah, he's talking about what's running down Grant Street.
We're talking about Grant Street, that, then I mean, this is a whole different project out here.
All right, but that's all part of it, right? That's.
That's not part of the original two hundred, this is another this is what we're kind of having some discussions about now that they want, it's like, what is the real seven hundred? There's two projects, the total of seven seventy or something, yeah. That's a whole new thing, they should be paying for all that.
Well, I thought, didn't we agree though to, I thought we agreed to take the power to a pole adjacent to where they were going to go buried? And that was on forty-seven.
Yeah. They're coming in behind uh south side of, south end of Westwood, down Grant, that's the line where they actually take the power in from. That's what you're talking about. And that's what we agreed to, that's what Max is talking about, having to pay for.
Well, there was one discussion about going out there on forty-seven and then going in to, from forty-seven into Arbor. And I thought that's what we were doing, I didn't realize we were going we're going to pair on the south side, how are they getting down there to the south side of, of uh Westwood?
Yeah, basically already have. So they ran the line up from the substation and around the corner, that's how to go down Grant and right down the backside of Westwood into that addition.
Up there on my house, where the line goes right down my house.
Was that all, Lou?
Yeah, they put new lights to them. We went down there, put uh new transformers in, so everyone's in sync, yeah. They're moving right along.
I can vouch for the fact they put new transformers in, they go right through Arbor.
That's good, I'm glad they did.
Yeah.
Makes it hard to mow, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's starting to come back a little bit, they didn't tear it up too bad, but.
Okay.
We had a little discussion about asking for permission, so.
Okay.
I just have one, one little thing, uh, this is the grant agreement from Lily, so they're covering the cost for the day of service, which totaled three thousand dollars, but it just needs signed by the town, so.
For the law.
Um, the day, Lily Day of Service, they're covering three thousand dollars for the expenses and tools used to do that. Um, so that just needs signed off and then they're sending the funds.
They just want, they just want my signature, they want everybody's.
I think it just needed yours. Um, yeah, and then they'll reimburse the town for the expenses that were.
Now they don't see, they pay their own pockets.
Okay, if those are separate, then that is still something I'm learning, so I will figure out. Those in there.
Okay, we've still got to sign them. Okay, there's that. Okay. Before we, before we close, we still have things to sign, but let me go back to the truck. What, what do you guys feel is a fair price to offer? Because we can discuss it tonight and not make a decision on them, but the council's sitting here, we can discuss it and then decide whether, whether that's reasonable.
Well, first of all, the truck will be probably, at least in the beginning, be used mostly for the street department, because we're thinking pulling the the uh leaf back with that truck.
Yeah.
So given that, that would still be a part of ownership that you guys should have. So we're thinking around forty thousand dollars.
Do we even, I, I don't remember, but can we figure out how much we paid for it?
I don't either, I don't know that either. I mean, I've heard nothing.
You got it.
I don't know, sixty-three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars.
Sixty-three? Without the truck.
Check into file, sixty-three, nine hundred and forty.
And, and another, another thing to think about here is, we've talked about this before. You guys actually own all the lot equipment, correct? So we're basically giving you some money to help with your budget to have a truck that you guys should be paying for.
So we did, we already paid for it.
I know that, well, and I'm saying.
I personally was going to say, why, why do utilities need to buy it from us?
Well.
It says we agree that you guys start using. Yeah, we, I mean, we've already agreed that you guys could use it.
And that's fine, we're just, we're trying to help out you guys.
Right.
Another way to put a little money in the car.
Well, if. Moving money to the general fund.
Yeah, just moving money to the general fund for you guys. If you don't want to do that, that's fine, we'd be glad to use the truck. But, um, yeah, I mean, that's up to you guys.
Well, guess I'd have a question for Earl on, just like in the winter time, now we're contracted with Venus or London as far as snow removal. Is there a use for our truck and our our blade in the winter time? And if so, who can drive it from you guys? To use it and what, what, what do you use it for? I mean, originally, the, we originally got all that to clear the intersections, that's what we got for. If Venus is going to do it, then we probably don't need to do it at all.
But it could still be used for
Yeah, the water plant.
Water plant.
Sewer plant.
Sewer out here in front of parking lots here. Uh, it, it's, it could be used, yeah. But we did a certain amount of plowing outside of, of what the service does on just the main streets. And we do obviously do the pond all the way around, we have to have access to it year-round, rather than do the water plant, like I said, it's a parking lot. If we had to expand it beyond that, obviously that gives us opportunity to do that.
Who have you got though that, that can do that? Who, who uses the truck? Who, who actually drives it from you guys?
Well, we just use it basically for errands right now. I mean, it's not a day-to-day go-reese-meat or type of thing, it's uh take the water sample down Indianapolis Health, the Indiana Health Department, and run back, put miles on, get it cleaned up a little bit, actually use it. That's really what it's being used for right now. But now that we know that what we're going to do is that, we'll start putting it to a little bit more use.
Well, I guess my, my point is that everybody can't just jump in that truck with a snow pile on them, go out there and buy a snow, somebody has to have at least a little bit of training to be able to drive that truck.
Right.
Who you got to do that?
Well, I mean, one of them could be trained that, I mean, I've been plowing with the Silverado for four years. So I can jump in it without question and do it. And I think the other guys wouldn't be able to come along and might not do that also.
Well, my, my answer is we've got a brand-new truck, I don't want to see it torn up
I'll shoot.
with somebody that's going to jump in and I don't know what they're doing and tear up the truck.
That thing, man. Well, all eyes are on it, man, all eyes are on it, everything belongs to your truck, everybody does this brand-new, last thing anybody wants to do is responsible for the scratch, I'll tell you that. There's a free training on LTAP's website, um, takes weather training for safety, things like that. Does it have strobe lights and stuff on it? I don't even know. Does it have strobe lights? I don't know. Built into the. Yeah, it's, it all has.
I think all it's got is just push the button for the four-way flashers, that's all it's got on it. It's got, the headlights are done, the headlights are built onto the snow pile.
Right.
But it's okay, I, I just was concerned about I, I mean, I, I think it's great you guys use it and as far as like reach, I don't have a problem with not even getting paid for it at all, I don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem with that either.
I just want to use it properly so that it lasts a long time.
Sure.
But we got other people on the board that may want some money, so.
I would, I don't have, I mean, if they're willing to buy the truck, even though we own it, it's kind of a, kind of a strange deal, but.
The world's favorite, huh? We understand that, we want to, we want to use it for the league, which falls under the street department anyway. I don't know what else, there's always more plan on using it.
Well, we can, we could discuss that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we don't use it.
Make that decision later.
The only other thing, the only, there's one other thing on unfinished business that we haven't discussed as a council is Earl's proposal. Did everybody get a copy of Earl's proposal on raising what those guys get? I can't remember how much it was, but did everybody, all the council all get a copy of your proposal or was it just me? With the street department raising?
Are you talking about me?
Yes.
Uh, no, you're the only one who got that.
Okay, I don't have it with me. That's, we, we need to bring that up probably next meeting. He had a proposal on pay raises for people, guys that were working the street department, right? And yourself. I don't remember, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all we got.
I got one though.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So I'm the fire department, we're the festival. And there are ruts out there that are at least eighteen inches deep. Uh, definitely would have been in, but it doesn't, because it goes right up to the telephone pole. Not that that matters, but um, it was absolutely awful. I mean, I'm so sorry for any detail I had to move back to that, that was brutal. But, so I'm going to make a proposal that, and I think we should do it like immediately, get a load of filter in there. I personally will go out there and level it, fill in the ruts so we can let it settle over the winter, freeze and thaw. And then next spring, I really think that we need to I'm not saying we got to hire somebody to do it. I think we can maybe probably do, I got a fair amount of equipment. Uh, but I think the whole front lot needs redone. I would also like to see them three maple trees come down so that we can do it properly. There's, there's other trees that are up front, the three that are just out there in the middle, they're just kind of in the way. But I mean, it is rut. Like bad rut. Along uh seventy-five, there's a rut there that goes full length of that, where they obviously trenched and it settled. That one there is probably two fifty. And I'm thinking, some kid go run through it and stick a leg in it, he's going to break his feet and. But anyway, that's my thought, get a load of filter, and I do think it will take every bit of the dump truck work to put them in. And then I personally go level it out. And then next spring it will have to be finished after freezing thaw. If not,
We don't have access to any dirt, do we?
Not good filter like what you want down there. Now, you know, they're running all sorts of dirt out of the pit like crazy.
Water treatment.
No.
So no, we don't have any dirt like that. I know this, the site is, I think it's positive on the floor, that green one, the site, water treatment, what about?
We have green filter.
What about, what about getting MPA to bring that in, so that it wants major ruts?
But I don't know that they made all of them. What's the one along seventy-five?
That's a water main. Water main that's settled.
I mean, I, I personally believe a load of dirt from the pit out here would be good for just filling it in so that can settle in. And then my thought next spring is going to just probably spray that whole thing and chill it, because it's basically crabgrass that wants to grow in. And then till it and just drag it, drag it, and then seed it and start over. And the ditch is rough, I mean, like it's bad. But we're going to be mowing it.
Out there on the other park where we landed and stuff, that was all pretty decent out there.
Yeah, I, I did not mow that, but I did walk it and I felt like that was sufficient.
Yeah, that's pretty decent grass out there.
That front corner is just a rack. I mean, it took me forever to mow that.
What do we need to get, what do we need to get dirt from out there? You guys don't, you guys don't have anything to do that with.
Well, we've got that single axle dump truck. It's what we run gravel and sand with. One load's going to be what we're thinking, two loads.
I'd say probably a couple loads, you're talking about this full, full type trailer?
No, 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 no.
Oh, that one truck.
Yeah, the single axle. Single axle.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, I mean, we could, we could start with one and then we can see how far it goes. And then we need to, we'll get another one, but my thought is we just get it in there before winter. It can freeze and thaw and get rained on, not that we did it in spring and redo the whole thing and then it settles and we're back where we was. If we can get it leveled out before.
We need to make a motion to put, not so much money, the value paid, but how we do that.
I have no idea how much it would be.
So I don't know what all they're doing, she all these dump trucks are running back and forth, that's all they do, that's usually not something they did. So part of the agreement on doing that new area again, there was, they had to build a thirty-foot burn to hide all that area from forty-seven. So the church, the house, if you didn't have to look at, well, they're digging into that now. So I don't know, again, I don't know if they're charging, those trucks already go up to the scale, so they've got some sort of agreement, they drive straight back there, get loaded, drive straight out. So they're obviously counting the loads they've got in order to charge it, we're gonna have to look into it. It's not something they normally have on the price list.
When it was, uh, to one on forty-seven, closer to the throw kill farm, the, the main farm, you know?
Yeah.
That one there, you could bring your truck, they give it to you for free, but this may be different now, but.
Right.
But they're trying to get rid of some of them.
Did you check on that, Earl?
Yeah, we'll find out what their, what, what their whole approach is and how they're charging.
Okay.
They had an excavator back there, that's all they're doing. I mean, there's sometimes fifteen, twenty trucks in a line.
Yeah, I counted.
One by one by one.
I counted something like twelve or fifteen today when I was coming back from Lebanon and walking in the fall down. That was just that one time I went back in.
See, see if you can get a price, Earl.
I was gonna say, I used to count five foot now, but I usually get between thirty-five and forty-five.
Oh, I'm sure, this was just that one trip I was coming back from Lebanon. I didn't count all the rest of the day.
A lot of that's going to the state out there on that new exit, so I'm sure the state's.
Yeah.
Paying something.
Yeah, the state's usually about six months behind, they pay for stuff or more.
Yeah, the payroll dockets are usually separate.
Separate, okay, that sounds good.
Anybody else got anything? Jeff, you got anymore? Anybody else got anything out there? That's all we got then until we get this stuff signed and we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, appreciate all of you.
Which one did you want to do?
Oh, the, the regular ones that you guys normally do, it's just fine, I just printed that to, in case you wanted to see vendors in order. Yeah, that puts the APVs up to date now, because I just learned how to do the, the register. Yes, yeah, so one is the end of August and then all of September, and then we're up to date, and so the next one will be the.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, we're official, close.
Yeah.
Let me ask you guys.
Oh, do you, is the meeting adjourned for a live stream? Is the meeting adjourned for a live stream to end it or?
I wanted to ask you guys what you're thinking about. Anybody? Be interested in being on the board, because obviously we're gonna have, we've got officially the nine thirty hours.
I hated when someone told me that.
I just thought I'd say something, then we'll think about it and see what you think. Well, I knew, I knew it was that way, but because she, she just, all she did was. But it's obvious that she's not gonna stay with us. She might as well get a head of team.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion at eight sixteen, we close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. We're done tonight, guys. Now you can get good.